You want to do that right before lunch, right after?
Hey, Murphy Jones. Good to have you back. Hey, we're good.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. If you'll stand for a word of prayer. We'll be led by Kenny Edwards, our treasurer, then remain standing for our. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We'll go ahead and get comfortable. We're going to be here a while. I call to order the regular meeting of the Van Zet County Commissioners Court of Winstead, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine oh one AM. Now, its form is established with all members of court present with the exception of Commissioner West. He's not over fifteen. So we do have a form. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court approval of same for August the fourth, twenty twenty-one. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton. Is there any questions, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaBran. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of proven, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying the county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion on the bills that's been submitted for payment, ratifying the bills? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business. Is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Anyone have any announcements or anything?
I'll make a comment. I've already got several comments on this building. How good it looks. That Facebook stuff help.
Yeah, it's amazing. I appreciate it. Harold Hydro Wash Pressure Washing, he's a local guy here, did a fantastic job. They're still cleaning the sidewalks and everything. Did a great job.
It's looked good. That sidewalk out there, cleaner than I've seen it. Twenty years.
No. They, what they did. Is there any other announcements? Okay, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, did anyone sign up for public comments? Well, we'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider rescheduling the September first, twenty twenty-one Commissioners Court meeting to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one due to the Commissioners and County Judge being at legislative update conference. Now, not sure we even need to do this. Let me, let me explain. We had all signed up, or pretty much all of them, to go to legislative update track. And me personally, they're not even, they're, they're down there, but they're not, I mean, part of not down there, so I backed down. I'm doing my virtual. I'm, I signed up to do virtual. Is every, is all, will we have enough for a form on the first?
I think so. I signed up for virtual, so I'll be there.
I'm not going down, so.
I'm not going up there.
So we'll be here. Okay. So I don't think we need to take any action. We don't need to reschedule. We'll just leave the regularly scheduled Commissioners Court for September the first. Okay. So no, no, no action taken on item number seven. Item number eight, conduct public hearing on the matter of the proposed budget for fiscal year ending September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So at this time, we will enter into the public hearing.
Chris, would you mind seeing if there's anybody in the hall that would like to come on?
For the budget here. It's nine oh six AM. I went out there for the public hearing, so we will, we will open up the public hearing on the matter of the proposed budget for fiscal year ended September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The meeting is now open. Item number, item number one, form is established here with the court of public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on the proposed county budget for ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two? Anybody from the public here? Anybody here? It was. Yeah, it's published in the newspaper on August the eighth and also published on the county website. But the hearing would be this morning. It was supposed to be in the newspaper on August eighth, and I didn't know what was expected.
It was there.
Yeah.
It was there.
Yeah.
I, I seen it.
It was published. Yes. If Sandy said it, it has to be right. Second call for anyone to speak on the Van Zet County proposed budget ending September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. No one in the hall. Okay, being no one to participate in the public hearing on the matter of the proposed budget. Item number two, the Commissioners Court will consider the proposed budget. We do have a copy of the proposed budget right here. And we will, I would entertain a motion to itself reject or modify.
I make a motion to modify.
Okay, got a motion that we modify.
Second, Pearson.
I got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner Pearson to modify the proposed budget for fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Any? Any discussion, questions? Being none, being none, all those in favor of modifying the budget, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. What that means is that it's still not final. We still go back in. There's still some loose ends we need to tie up, finalize, and we'll bring it back for a final approval, I believe, September the first. So motion did pass to modify. Item number nine, discuss and consider approval of the proposed tax rate.
Hey, Don, do we, it says here, take a record vote, set time that, do we need to get that in that motion that that public, second public hearing, big win standard?
Number eight.
On number nine, what we just did?
No, we is on number eight.
Okay.
We're moving to number nine.
Okay, pardon me.
Yeah, and you're correct. We are going to need a motion that does, that when we get to the, on there. Item number nine, discuss and consider approval of proposed tax rate twenty twenty-one. Fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two, take record vote, and then set date and time for the public hearing. We could do all that in motion. The proposed tax rate, a tax rate of point five, two, three, four, seven, one, seven, four, hundred dollar evaluation has been proposed by the governing body of Van Zet County. The breakdown of that, that is lowering the tax rate by nine point eight percent from last year. It breaks down to maintenance and operating, ten point four oh nine six zero eight three zero. Special road, we left that at ten cents. The point one, oh, 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 oh. Ten cent. Oh, yeah. Debt service is point zero one three eight six three four four, which brings a total of point five two three four seven one seven four per hundred dollar evaluation. Again, that is, we did, we are lowering the tax rate of nine point eight percent. So that is our proposed tax rate at point five two three four seven one seven four per hundred dollar valuation. The no new revenue tax rate would be point five one three four eight zero nine five per hundred dollar evaluation. The voter approval tax rate is point five two three four seven three zero one. We are staying below the voter approval rate. So no new net, no new revenue tax rate is the tax rate for the twenty twenty-one tax year that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue for Van Zet County from the same properties in both the twenty twenty tax year and the twenty twenty-one tax year. The voter approval rate is the highest rate tax rate that Van Zet County may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The proposed tax rate is greater. The proposed tax rate is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. This means that Van Zet County is proposing to increase profit taxes for the twenty twenty-one tax year. A public hearing on the proposed tax rate will be held on August, no, that's going to be September the first. Will be held on September the first, twenty twenty-one at nine AM at the Van Zet County courtroom, one twenty-one East Dallas Street, room two oh four Canton, Texas. The proposed tax rate is not greater than the voter approval tax rate. As a result, Van Zet County is not required to hold an election at which voters may accept or reject the proposed tax rate. However, you may express your support or, or opposition to the proposed tax rate by contacting members of the county, the Van Zet County Clerk's Office, or your Commissioners of Van Zet County. If their offices are by attending the public hearing mentioned above, again, that public hearing on the proposed tax rate will be September the first, twenty twenty-one, at nine AM. We do have, Miss Hill has package here of, of all that information. If anybody would want it, it's pretty extensive. If anybody would like to have it, if you raise your hand, you'd be happy to give you. There's a pie chart in there and it broke down.
I'll make a motion and we approve the tax rate for the year twenty twenty-one, which will be the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-two at point five two three four seven one seven four, and then we set September first, twenty twenty-one, at nine AM as our date for the public hearing on said rate.
Okay, and that is approving the proposed tax.
Yes, approving the proposed tax.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner LaBran. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider revision of lot fourteen in Albright Edition in precinct three.
Okay. We, when we said in our new subdivision guidelines.
Do we need to close the hearing and go back to the week?
Well, we did, yes. We didn't close the hearing. Okay, that will, no. Yeah, okay. Well, let's move back up to number eight on the public hearing. There was no, no one spoke or anything, but we do need to reopen. Item number eight, the public hearing on the matter of the proposed budget. There was no one that spoke, failed to close the meeting. So we, is there a motion to, to close that public hearing meeting at this time? So, same motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner LaBran. All in favor, say aye. Meeting is closed. Okay, item number ten, discuss and consider revision of lot fourteen in Albright Edition in precinct three.
In, in our new subdivision guidelines, it addresses how we, what we always refer to as a replat. And our guidelines have changed a little bit. Now, when someone approaches the county and requests a replat, replat of a piece of property that's already planted, the first thing that has to happen, and I gave you all the guidelines there, is the court has to decide if any public property is involved. And that would be in reference to if it's changing a road, or if it's, if there's any public parks involved in the replat, or if there was a public school there. And, and the reason the court has to decide that, it affects the way notification is given. If public property is involved, then the Commissioners Court is responsible for giving the notification. If there's no public property involved, then the petitioner is, is responsible for the notification. So I bring today this lot number fourteen in the Albright Edition, and I have reviewed it, and there's, there's no public property involved. And so what, what that means is now the petitioner will have to notify everyone that owns property within two hundred feet of this lot, and and he has to bring proof back to the court that noted that they were, that all those owners were notified. Also, it requires notification on our website, Scott, for thirty days prior to when we discuss and consider approval of this revision. So with all that being said, today, I'd like to make a motion that on today's date, eight eighteen twenty-one, Van Zet County Commissioners Court reviewed a proposed plat revision of lot fourteen in Albright Edition and determined that there is no public property that will be affected. And the petitioner will notify all property owners within two hundred foot of said property and provide proof thereof to the Commissioners' office owner before nine twenty-two twenty-one. And the Van Zet County Commissioners Court will discuss and consider approval of said proposed plat revision on nine twenty-nine twenty-one. And the Van Zet County, and Van Zet County will post notice of the proposed plat revision on, on our website for at least thirty days prior to nine twenty-nine twenty-one. And nine twenty-one, nine twenty-nine twenty-one is our regular Commissioners Court date. That's my motion.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, I mean, motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to say that our present subdivisions is not retroactive. So something that happened thirty or thirty-five, forty years ago, you're just going to have to follow what was state law back then, section two thirty-two one oh oh one of the Texas local government code. So I don't, you know.
Well, I ran all this by Mr. Bass, and, and he wrote these guidelines, and it's not, it's a subdivision that was made thirty years ago, but it was, it's a plated piece of property, and you cannot ever change a plated piece of property without going through this court for approval.
And, and that's what I'm saying. The state law still has effect over those plans.
So we have motion, second. Any more questions, discussion?
Our subdivision policy was based off of the state law.
That's right.
Yeah, so we're going through the process.
That's right.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider revision of lot thirty-five in the Cannon Land Subdivision in precinct three.
Okay, this is the same song, just another verse. This, this is another plat that, that, this, this one is eleven acre platen, or divided into a nine acre, when they're through, if approved, there'd be a nine acre platen and a two acre platen. There is no public property involved in it. So on this one, I make a motion that on eight eighteen twenty-one, Van Zet County Commissioners Court reviewed proposed plat revision of lot thirty-five in the Cannon Land Subdivision and determined that there is no public property will be affected. And the petitioner will notify all property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of said property and provide proof thereof to Commissioners' office owner before September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and the Van Zet County Commissioners Court will discuss and consider approval of said proposed plat revision on September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. And Van Zet County will post notice of the proposed plat revision on our website for at least thirty days prior to September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
Right, that's motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaBran. Any questions or discussion?
What's, I would like to say what Chad said, well, it's just about word for word, or, or subdivision guidelines to the state, to the state statute.
Yeah, that's right, section two thirty-two.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I appreciate you.
Item number twelve, discuss and consider warning proposal for the new chiller system or replacement of the evaporated cooler at the main courthouse. Miss Hill, would you like to address the court on those proposals?
Judge, Commissioner, on, I was to say that I accepted all the proposals. We actually did two. We did one to just replace the tower outside, the evaporated cooler. And we also had a proposal to accept for a new system, which would be like the cooling tower and whatever the wall or downstairs, whatever downstairs. We did receive two bids. On the evaporated cooler, we had a bid for Maddox for one hundred and two thousand nine hundred and three dollars. Consolidated refrigeration was ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three. And now that would just be replace that tower up there. Wouldn't do anything to be inside. Then on the new system, Maddox bid two hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. And consolidated bid one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and forty. So what the court has to decide.
On the new system, CRT bid what?
One hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
Okay. And Maddox bid?
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-four.
Yeah.
You have to decide, number one, which option you want to choose from. And then, as you can see, our recommended, I would recommend your own, which is consolidated refrigeration. They currently have our contract for all the maintenance on the evaporator, and chilling unit now, so we know the service, and, you know, we know you already have the experience with them, so my recommendation would be whichever option you choose.
And we've had the electric company up here to look at our electrical system. Joe was working probably with it. Talking to Jeff Abrams, which is the owner, but he's the main guy at CRT. He's told me, and he's talked to Tim West, Joe Carter. He said, if you go with that new system, you're going to save a lot. It requires maintenance. Maddox shared with Sandy that they're actually the ones that installed it back in the sixties, and it was designed to last fifteen years. And it's still down there, and so we, I guess, but we spend a lot of money, might as well, on that. My recommendation would be to go with the new air system with CRT in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. But that's just my recommendation.
Thirty, thirty-nine thousand of my dollars. But you know, that's quite a chunk of money. I wonder if we need to go out for bids on electrical. Just if we can get a better deal. I mean, just my thought, I don't know.
If we give the specs to Joe, and he, he, he work with, I will be with these here.
But you might add that electrical is going to have to be upgraded, no matter which one of these companies you go. He, he won the new, it's going to. He, he won the new, it's going to evolve.
But so this CRT, is that replacing the outside and inside of the basement and everything? Just taking all that stuff out of what I call the older room and they're taking, removing all that. Put a new system on that pad out there that is more efficient. Those cooling tires, they've told me they last, I mean, their lifespan is about ten years. That one's ten years old. That one was put in two thousand eleven. And that's kind of surprising that things don't last, but they got chemicals and stuff and I don't know.
So that's your motion to replace both inside and outside.
Completely go with the new Irish system.
Yeah, it gotta be best too, because the other system inside will go out soon too. It's just low.
Yeah. And then I think it's a complete upgrade of the air conditioning system for the courthouse. Yes, it's more expensive.
Yeah, I second that. What you do is that. Is, is the electrical another item that we need to talk about or is that just going to be thrown in with this? We're just going to go ahead and go, although it's not over fifty thousand dollars, it's forty thousand. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, we need to get another bid on that.
You could bring in somebody else and let them look at it.
Yeah.
Because it's not over fifty thousand, we have to.
Right.
We can always.
Just maybe get Joey to have somebody else look at it.
John, I'm bored with you.
Some happen to say, maybe.
You want to do the electrical, regardless of which company, I mean, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to have, see if we get someone else coming in and look on the electrical.
Just look and see. Oh, in the ballpark, you know, forty thousand dollars.
Never hurts how two bids and no.
That's right, that's right. Okay. So I made the motion to go with the new air system chiller. And except the, where it's not a bid, it's a RFP for CRT in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. I got a vote second by Commissioner Melton. Is there any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approving proposals from Southern Software in the amount of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and LGS in the amount of twenty-eight hundred dollars for interfacing of systems between Van Zandt County Jail and the Van Zandt County District Attorney's Office. We had a workshop a few while back. Southern Software said that they would have to, once they got the information from LGS, that they would have to build a pushout. And once, and that's, so that's the forty-two fifty. Is to build a pushout. LGS would have to build a pull-in. And so that's, that's the numbers that, now, we do have from Southern Software, you can see we have a, Tonda contacted me and said she had talked to LGS. And they, they informed her that the, the, the bid for their part would be twenty-eight hundred. We don't have that writing. She said that she would try to get that set before Commissioner's Court. But we, at this time, we don't have that twenty-eight hundred. But they have committed to Tonda to establish the cost. Scott, did you have any final yet?
And this is what we talked about, the workshop.
It is. It was one of those added expenses for that.
I make a motion, we accept these practices. We've already discussed it, man. We just, we just don't make any decisions in workshops without coming back to court.
That's right. So you got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to approve the Southern Software in the amount of forty-two fifty and LGS in the amount of twenty-eight hundred for the interfacing of the systems between the county jail and the Van Zandt County District Attorney's Office. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion?
These are one-time papers.
Yeah.
Just for everybody to know.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider entering into an interlocal agreement between Van Zandt County Fire Marshal and Range County for the inspection of the Range County Jail.
Don, I'd like to make a correction as for the fire inspection of the Range County Jail. We won't be inspected. We won't be done.
Yeah.
What we considered normal jail inspection, just, we just, and this has been going on for a long time. In, in there, we should have had an interlocal agreement all along. And, you know, when you find out, you make a mistake, correct it. So I make a motion, we enter into this agreement and authorize the county judge to sign it when it's presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada to enter into a local agreement between Van Zandt County Fire Marshal and Range County for the fire inspection of the Range County Jail. What we've been doing is that our fire marshal has been inspected and they can do that. They inspect, they go over, they go over to Range County. Range County compensates Van Zandt County for that inspection in this time in the amount of two hundred dollars. They wrote the check. The clerk's office said, well, before we receive that money, we need to, we need an interlocal agreement. Susan says, okay. I did contact Judge Wolf from Range County for an interlocal agreement. He is kind of under the weather. Is, I mean, I was out for Sean, Sean to write up the interlocal agreement. Judge Wolf, Judge Wolf did share with me, he'd be happy to, to sign it once he was clear. And no problem with it, just simply, you know, don't be, we all big table. Sean would draw that up.
Just wondering, yeah. Mr. Chad, I don't know about this. Is the state fire marshal inspect, inspect Range County?
They can. We've been doing it for courtesy, because, so everybody know, Range County does not have a fire marshal. So they, they, when they need their inspection, they have to get on the list and wait for the state. Or another county, if they want to, whoever they want to get, whoever's qualified, the person that's qualified to do that inspection. And so out of, out of good neighbors, we've been doing it for several years. Well, I guess ever since Van Zandt County added a fire marshal.
Chuck Derry, uh, James Derry.
Prior to that, we had to get somebody else to inspect our jail also. And so we're, we're just, we've just been being a good neighbor. And I might, I might add, according to Mr. Allison, we should really, there's several ahead of here. We should really, he said we should go over our interlocal agreements every, every year and update them, tidy them up to keep us in line on those interlocal agreements.
Yeah, a motion that's second. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider interlocal agreement between Van Zandt County precinct one, Roanoke Bridge and Grant's Lane High State Independent School District.
Yes, and I'll put this one on here. We just talked about with the last item, there's been a lot of general agreements. It's gone on for many years. It's worked well for us, but by law, we're supposed to have interlocal agreements. And so I've been working on getting that done with other Texas entities I work with. This item here is Grant's Lane High State. This agreement is very similar to the one I've done with Fruitville, but it has been adjusted to the needs of Grant's High State that I can work on. So St. Rose, it'll say drives and parking lots and such. As you can see, they've already reviewed it. They're in agreement with me. If y'all are, I'll be able to conduct work over there. So I make a motion to approve.
You got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider interlocal agreement between Van Zandt County Roanoke Bridge and the city of Edgewood, Texas.
Gentlemen, this one too is mine. This is identical to the one on Fruitville, which has changed names to Edgewood. So how many Golden Sis have them stuff in their city and the county receive reimbursements for expenses in relation to such. I make a motion to approve.
You take that motion by Commissioner LaPrada. There are second, second, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider reviewing the interlocal contract for county, for Van Zandt County nine-one-one database management with East Texas Council of Government for the contract period of September the first, twenty twenty-one, and ended August the thirty-first, twenty twenty-third. We contract with ITCOC for to do our nine-one-one addressing for counties. It is in the amount, the, today the cost for the service is five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. That's what the contract.
So I'm a person.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion?
Just wondering why, why is there so much higher than Greg County? Or these other counties? Greg County's got twice the population. I don't know.
It's the same period. I just figured ours was a long period.
This is a two-year contract.
Two years for everybody.
What is?
That's bad, but. It's kind of hot out there.
Yeah, it does. Okay. Did we have a motion?
Yes, motion second.
You got a motion that's second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. And I will, I will contact you. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider setting salaries for Van Zandt County elected officials for local government code one five two point zero one three for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. You have a list of the proposed salary for elected officials. What that is, is the, the, the is a five percent. You have to set the elected official salary. I just, I'll just, the whole budget here has a five percent for the elected officials of county employees. With the exception of law enforcement, and the law enforcement was seven percent. But this, we do have to run, we have to set elected official salaries for proposed. Publish them in the newspaper. Today, the, the clock starts ticking. They have five days. They have to, five o'clock Monday to file with me, the county judge, a request for agreements. But that is the proposed salary for the elected officials to be published and run.
I make a motion, we set these as part.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Saying you will notify all the elected officials this morning. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider Van Zandt County to order the November the second, twenty twenty-one special election on Texas constitutional amendments. Susan, do you want to address the court on that? Is there a motion to order the special election, November the second, twenty twenty-one, special election for the Texas constitutional amendment? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twenty, discuss and consider, consider and approve early voting in election day voting locations. You have a list of those locations before you. Hours from seven A M. to seven P M. November the second, twenty twenty-one, on the special election Texas constitutional amendment. Is there a motion to approve the early voting and election day voting locations?
So I'm a person.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twenty-one, discuss and, discuss and approve modified appointment of elected, election judges for the remainder of the two-year term. Susan, that's this new list you give us.
I think we got one with this one. It looks like some of the, change locations and maybe there's one that actually dropped off health issues and so. But most of our just, you know, passions here.
Kind of hard to recruit these people too, isn't it?
So this is not, this, what you brought us this morning is not enough, a total new list.
Right, that some of them are on the old list. And she just added the added system we're supposed to have. I just want to make sure the full half, I think, that he does.
Yeah, it does replace.
Yes, and it'll replace the list that's in your book, which will notice the names of the same, they, they.
Some of them changed. Like one, I, for example.
Right.
Was, sure, change. Sterling, Dave.
So I think that one's here, maybe some issues going on.
One B changed.
Comes back, there's nowhere for us to know.
That's what opposed us to change.
Two, two A changed. Yeah, one C changed.
Well, it's just, the new one's just a much, much shorter list. It doesn't have near as many people on it. I'm talking like, I'm talking about like about. This, what you gave us today is both sides list?
No, that is one part of the list.
Okay. Okay.
What's, what's in the book is both parts, Republican and Democrat.
Republican part of the list is not.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, because I see you on the, okay. The list you give us today replaces the Democrat list that's in your book. For transparency, I won't call it out. I want us to feel the same, okay.
I understand your point though, Susan. I understand your point, yes.
I'm making, I'm making motion we accept list of judges, the Republican judges as printed in our book, and the Democrat judges as printed on this revised page.
Okay, that's motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
I would like to make everyone know, we don't kick, these, these are brought to us from the individual parties. So, it's not, it's not something this court's sitting up here picking, this court's approved.
And if anybody would like to volunteer, you're always looking for volunteers.
Chairs, they, they would contact the chair or the chair.
Contact your party chair, Republican or Democrat, or Independent or whatever, and contact them, let them know you'd like to be part of the election, our election judge. Okay.
We have more.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments.
You're gonna need to point out something on this budget amendment.
Okay.
We have a vote for. My office, I have a picture that I want to tell that you know. Well, there's two I want to talk about. I, the judge and I received an email from the extension office, and they had ran out of money in their training line. They were trying to catch up on some training, you know, last year they lost out with the COVID, and Tommy and Melissa ran out of funds in their training line, and the judge said, well, just move some of your money around. Well, Tommy and Melissa have very, but very small, but very limited. They do very well with their managing with what they have. And fortunately for me, all of my training in my office was purchased. So I didn't have any hotel costs. I had no deals, no knowledge. All I had was registration costs. So I asked the judge if I might be able to move a thousand dollars from my training budget to Tommy's. So that's one that I presented. That is kind of, it's not, it's a lot of transfers that it all is within general budget, but I wanted to bring your attention with that. And then the second one that I wanted to bring up is and Tonda was gonna be here today, she's on access to the ten, we're gonna visit about it. She renewed your budget, whole budget, God had it through. We put it to agreement that she's going to purchase a vehicle for her VA investigator, and then for the new position that the court had created. Now, Tonda agreed to pay for one out of her COVID funds and her free trial and pension fund, and then county department. And we allowed forty thousand for each vehicle. Which she called me the other day, and she asked me about the Bible, which allows us to go on and accept the, they're already did. The vehicles have already went through the dead process, and now we can go on and look for those cars. And she said, she asked me, she said, can you help me? Can we look at them just so that I can get a head up, get a start on searching for my vehicle? Well, it was a new experience for me. Mr. Milton and I both, we both creeped onto that website and tried to effectively figure it out. And so I did go on there and put up a request for police agent for the holiday companies on Rockdale. I made a request that two vehicles that are fully ready to go, and their police packages next weekend, they're ready to go. And the price started by this. And you all know, the vehicles, law enforcement vehicles are very hard to come by right now. They are twenty twenty-one, they're explored, and so she asked me, she said, can we possibly purchase those now? So I'm coming to the court to ask you to just move from the judge's contingent, say, I thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven for one vehicle, and then her courtship fund and her PTI fund, which the court doesn't control, those are her problems, will pay for the other. That's the two gone. And then we will amend that proposed budget and type the data of the purchase out when we go back to the workshops.
Which will be tomorrow. We got workshops tomorrow, workshop. And what we're doing, if we go ahead and do it now, it's gonna be, you're saving about, you're saving four thousand.
This way it should be here by the time she gives her purse.
Okay, that's, that's your budget amendments, discuss and consider fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments.
Is that, Sandy, is it two thousand dollars of my contract service? Is that gonna square me away for the rest of the year until you guys want a new budget?
Yes, sir.
There we go.
I asked a question on the amendments. I did an amendment for the contract services on our, for our court. And with us going back and doing all these collections of these old tickets, a lot of it has Omni on it. It's not that contract services on Omni has on it, but they all been charged, so I have this money around. So, could it be possible the court that does an increase of contract services for us in decades? Collecting those older tickets with the Omni on it, it's gonna go up every time, so like a thousand dollars is gonna cover.
You're talking about increasing for the next year's budget?
Yes.
Yeah, I hate that any time we see that, that there's a and that's why, when, when I came in, this county judge, we, we want to put a real budget together. You know, and we try to get the numbers as close as we can. If we see that there's a department running short in an area, and it's not just some off-the-wall deal, that it, I mean, it is, then we, we, we go ahead and increase that budget for the next year to try to cover that, it's been covered, we want it as close as we can get.
Thank you. Second, I take your, this year on Omni for us.
Yeah. And this is time of year, we all, we get a lot of these, there, there's a lot of money being left in the budgets and stuff, and they're moving it around, trying to cover areas that are short. To put it in there, you know, where they have money, put it areas that are short. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments? So, I'm saying, I got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
Sandy, when, 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 when's your cutoff date gonna be this year for?
It's gonna be about two weeks, four, seven weeks. I have.
Yeah. Usually about the middle of any other questions or discussion? Being done, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider approval of July twenty twenty-one financial and investment report for county treasurer to be entered into the minutes of Commissioner's Court.
So I'm moving.
Yes.
That's mine, and I would like to table that for the Commissioner's Court, because we, this Commissioner's Court's already in the month, and got everything reconciled, so my numbers are not gonna be exactly correct, so I'll go to wait. But we're gonna finish reconciling all the papers.
Got a motion to table out, item number twenty-three, the July twenty twenty-one financial investment report for county treasurer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twenty-four, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government, and approval entry of same in the courts minutes as matter of record.
We're lost.
Yeah, Mr. West, you have any comments? That's right, you're not even.
He's probably listening.
I would be disappointed if he weren't. Is there a motion to approve the monthly reports?
I'm moving.
Got a motion by Commissioner Milton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being done, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner LaPrada. All in favor of adjourned, say aye. Those opposed, same side. We are adjourned.